All right, welcome to our afternoon session. Not going to recount the whole history of where we are, but the last one, obviously, we ended up moving forward from Melchizedek into the times of Jesus. And now we're going to jump ahead to start talking about the fifth epical revelation. You may notice the presenters are getting a little younger, so I'm not sure that was quite well thought out, but you know, it fits. So our next presenter, apologies, hold on. Sorry, I'm supposed to be able to hide this. Next presenter is Chris Wood, whom obviously many of you know, he's been active in the community for 24 years now. He served in a variety of capacities at several conferences and on several boards, even more committees, and served his eight years. So maybe I'm being fact-checked right now. Served for eight years as the international president for the Urancha Association and is currently serving the expanded board of trust. I'm sorry, the expanding board of Urancha Foundation as an associate trustee. Chris lives in Green Bay, Wisconsin, USA, but we let him come to Chicago to talk anyway with his wife and two growing boys and works as an air traffic controller. Spends a spare time developing his intermediate skill set in coffee, roasting, soap making, and woodworking. I did not make that introduction up, but now I'm at living. So Chris is somebody that from my first internet searches and explorations online with the Urancha book. I was one of the first people I hit upon a video of a presentation or something he did, and I always felt that I could understand what he said. And when I listened to his presentations, he always answered the question in my mind, and so I always connected with him on that level. I think he has a great mind and since then I've been lucky enough to know he also has a great personality. And he's going to give us a wonderful presentation, sure, always thoughtful, yet creative and educational. It's the whole point. So without further ado, Chris?
While we get this worked out. I'll test the levels of the microphone and make sure we're all on the same page. Oh, good. While I was sitting back there reviewing my speech before this all started. Three things came to mind. I had three realizations about this thing. The first is that I have no concept of how to spell Machaventa Melchizedek. I know I always start with a large M and then the letters just kind of flow out like jazz, right? The art is knowing when to stop. The second thing that came to mind is that I honestly, I don't, I'm not fully sure I know how to pronounce Machaventa Melchizedek. The vowels all seem to be interchangeable for me, and I want to add about a half dozen Rs and Ls along the way. All right. The third thing that occurred to me is that during lunch, I got a piece of lettuce lodged in my throat and we've just kind of fused now. I have a better understanding of that process. My fear though, is that during this speech, I'm going to get real enthusiastic and it's just gonna come out. And so there should be like a splash though, it's, it's gonna be an experiential experiment for all of us. So we'll see what happens. All right, I think everything's working now. So we're going to start with a story and for the sake of this conference, we'll just go ahead and call it a true story. It's a true story about a scholar in the Mediterranean world named Eretostenes. He was the one-time chief librarian at the Library of Alexandria and we're talking about 240 BCE. So in this story, Eretostenes has learned from travelers of a town of a swan that in a swan, a well casts no shadow at noon on the summer solstice. Eretostenes is then able to measure the shadow cast by a rod in Alexandria at noon on the solstice and combine the angles of the shadow with the distance between Alexandria and a swan to accurately triangulate the size of the spherical earth. I would argue that religion today is a lot like science in the ancient world. I can imagine that future generations will have more advanced understandings of techniques, that they may have an appreciation for the finer details that we do not yet grasp. But today we do have the tools to come to big and important spiritual decisions. Just as a scientist in the ancient worlds could come to important material conclusions. We can grasp the true choice of what it means to embrace the ascension career and to make some supreme decisions. We have also learned, or at least we are learning, that we do a disservice to each other and when we try only to force one spiritual perspective upon others. It would be as if Eretostenes had met the travelers from a swan and instead of learning about their city and their, and their scientific observations, that he had just insisted that Alexandria is the best city with all the best science and that everyone should just move to Alexandria. When we learn about other cultures, other religious systems, other interpretations of the best way to live on this world, we're able to perform a type of spiritual triangulation, learning more about the religious truths of the universe. Students of the Urancha book can become religious leaders when we listen more than we talk, when we share more than we lecture, when we worship more than we preach. And the latter later evolution of religion, a Melchizedek says, but is, is to be hoped that the ardent and sincere efforts of these future prophets will be directed less toward the strengthening of interreligious barriers and more toward the augmentation of the religious brotherhood of spiritual worship among the many followers of the differing intellectual theories which so characterize Urancha of Satana. Machaventa Melchizedek taught a similar lesson during his sojourn on earth. Have faith and God will do the rest. Melchizedek had warned his followers to teach about the one God, the Father and Maker of all, and to preach only the gospel of divine favor through faith alone. Take that faith to wherever it is that you are going and share it. It's pretty simple, really, hard to mess up. This presentation will be called a messed up look at epical revelations, where we were comparing the third and the fifth epical revelations. Now my wife tells me that I should not use the term messed up to describe our planet's histories of epical revelations. I shouldn't say non-standard. Because despite the twists and the turns that our narrative has taken, someone, somewhere almost certainly has a plan. True, there's almost certainly a plan, but they had to come up with that plan, that's non-standard plan for us because we have certainly kind of messed up our revelations so far. And it's made us pretty interesting. I have this friend who took Spanish language classes, starting in high school and every year going forward. But it wasn't until the later semesters of her college education that she really fell in love with the language and decided to pursue it in postgraduate study. And so her vocabulary is filled with these advanced concepts and thoughts from high-end Spanish literature and politics and philosophy. But because she didn't pay much attention to the earlier classes, she doesn't really know the word for spoon. She's basically useless in a bus station or a restaurant. But if you put her in a lecture hall, she can give a great presentation on the unstable economics of Costa Rican coffee plantations. We are that kind of messed up. It's a really interesting type of messed up, but still. So here is a chart listing standard epical revelations and the level of deity understanding and universe understanding that correspond with each. As you can see, as the epics develop, so too does our, we get an expanded revelation of our concepts of God and our understandings of the universe. Here's a chart of what we on Urancha have experienced so far. As Urancha book students, we're a really interesting type of messed up. We're living on a world still struggling with problems that were supposed to be addressed during the, by the planetary prince, but we have been presented with a deity concept that generally attends Trinity teachers. And it's up to us to synthesize these things within our minds, within our own personalities, and to share them with the world. While comparing the third and the fifth epical revelations, one question worth exploring is, is the fifth epical revelation an emergency revelation? But this is a plenary at a Urancha conference. We have a nearly seventy-year tradition of long-winded conference plenaries that we need to uphold. I can't just answer that question right off the top. We need to take a journey together. Pick up some tools along the way. What we need are a few good cosmologies. The Urancha book is filled with wonderful cosmology stories of how things started, what happened along the way, and how we got to right here, right now. All of our community organizations share a similar language when it's describing our overall goals. We are to be fostering a religion, a philosophy, and a cosmology, which are commensurate with man's intellectual and cultural development. So let's start our series of cosmologies by letting me tell you about how I came to truly understand the basic teachings of Machaventa Melchizedek. So there's this part of the Urancha book where Melchizedek makes a grand agreement with Abraham, and it's known as the covenant between man and God. And the terms of this agreement are that man will have faith and God will do the rest. The covenant of Melchizedek and Abraham represent the great Urancha agreement between divinity and humanity whereby God agrees to do everything. Man only agrees to believe God's promises and to follow his instructions. And so as a person, I think this agreement's pretty good, right? I'm not going to complain. But what I once wondered was, what does God get out of this? Why does God think this is such a great deal? I mean, it's something I would think about and I could intellectually answer, but it's not something I understood, really. So somewhere along the way, I meet Alice and we get married and she gets pregnant. And as many wonderful stories as I have about life with a pregnant Alice, this is not one of them. This is a story about our son's first day. So Alice goes into labor on a Friday morning. Come Monday afternoon, we have a healthy baby. I'll let you do the math on this one for a moment. Thank you, dear. Three days, 78 hours, give or take. But hey, we get a healthy baby out of the deal. So there are pictures to be taken and phone calls to make and a final stare down about what his name will be. And then there's a little happy family time and then, you know, it's night. So here's the thing, I'm tired because, you know, three days. But but Alice, Alice is exhausted because, you know, three days. Here's the thing, little baby Huckleberry wants to be held all the time. This is something that'll come to dominate the next six to nine months of his life is that he wants to be held the entire time. We hold him, he falls asleep, we put him down, he wakes up and cry. But this is his first day, so we're trying to cut him a little slack. Huck wants to be held and let's face it, he wants to be held by his mother. But Alice is exhausted. I'm tired. Alice is exhausted. So I sit down and I make a covenant with Huckleberry. I know you want your mother, I tell him. But your mother needs sleep tonight. So if you are willing to accept whatever form of comfort I might bring to you, then I will give it to you all night. And passing that night, that first night with our son, I sat and I rocked him. And I thought about Machaventa's deal with Abraham. And I thought, I get it now. Faith and trust, the two core teachings of Machaventa on this world, faith and trust. Alice took that the next morning. You don't see, I do have a book in front of me. I'm not myself asleep. Melchizedek had warned that his followers to teach about the one God, the Father and Maker of all, and to preach only the gospel of divine favor, favor through faith alone. The cardinal precepts of his teachings were trust and faith. He taught trust and the omnipotent benevolence of God and proclaimed that faith was the act by which men earned God's favor. The Salem missionaries went forth preaching this new gospel as they understood it. We're told that the Book of Job is a fairly good reflection of the teachings of the Salem schools at Kish and throughout Mesopotamia. The Book of Job is an interesting case study for comparing the third and the fifth epical revelations. So Job is a man who, by all outward appearances, is a man of, in God's favor. He has, oh, did we go too far? Who knows where we are anymore? Does anyone? I don't know. Anyway. Yeah. One more. What does this one say? All right. Good enough. Book of Job. So, one by one, Job loses all that he outwardly values. Disease and drought and misfortune take away everything. All his plans for the future crumble away and yet his faith and trust in God is undisturbed as he continues to praise God. The accumulation of outward good fortune is not a symbol of God's favor, nor is its removal a symbol of God's wrath. It's a lesson still worth spreading today. Similarly, the fifth epical revelation contains stories about faith and trust and perseverance in the face of adversity. Jesus asks to a God-knowing kingdom believer, what does it matter if all things earthly crash? One of my favorite examples of this in the Urancha book is John the Baptist. You know, I think that's Job and that's John. There's a picture. John the Baptist. John is a man raised with expectations of greatness. He's to cut a path through the wilderness upon which the Messiah himself would tread. He spent years studying the scriptures, trying to deduce the proper action to take. Then one day he began preaching and with the preaching came the baptisms. He still entertained expectations of the day ahead, but his immediate concern was the, was with the person in front of him in the river. And it was a long line. He gathered followers, led a movement, came to the attention of some paranoid authorities. But so focused was he on the baptism at hand that he did not recognize that Jesus himself had come to join him until they stood together in the water. And this is it. This is what they had talked about as children. The kingdom was at hand. Jesus submitted himself to baptism and then came the voice of God and suspense filled the air. Jesus's response was that he said nothing, not a word. He turned around and walked away and isn't heard from again for 40 days. John's response? The next day he goes back to baptizing. Weeks later, Jesus reappears. He joins the camp for a day or two. He speaks with a few folks. He pilfers a couple of apostles. And then he walks away again. John's response? The next day he goes back to baptizing. And this is it for John. Six months later, he'll be in prison. Two years later, he'll be dead. Any expectations he had for himself and Jesus was not destined to come on this world. But John was so able to focus on the task at hand, today we baptize, tomorrow will take care of itself. What does it matter if all things earthly crash? Another example of Jobian faith in the face of adversity is Van and the planetary rebellion. So Van, of course, is one of the prince's staff for our world, oh, so many years ago. One day about 300,000 years into his assignment, when things were really starting to get good, Galagastia, the chief of staff, calls a meeting. Hey, he says, I've got an exciting announcement. Prince Galagastia has proclaimed himself to be absolute sovereign of Urancha and demands that all administrative groups resign their functions and hand power over to Galagastia pending the reorganization of the planetary government. Good news, there's no God and Galagastia is in charge now. So Van is the chairman of the Supreme Council of Coordination. This council is the supreme court with wide function and trusted with all matters, not specifically assigned to other groups. Membership on this council has to be approved all the way up to the constellation Fathers of Edentia. Van gets up and makes what we are told is a masterly appeal. He said, look, what we're talking about might be viewed as, you know, well, planetary rebellion. So before we make any rash decisions, let's talk this over with the system sovereign. And everyone was like, oh, yes, yes, good plan. Ben, you're always the good voice of reason. So they shoot a quick email off to the system sovereign, or however the system circuits work. They reach out to the system sovereign. And Lucifer responds, giving order, designating Galagastia as the supreme sovereign of Urancha and commanding absolute and unquestioned allegiance to his mandates. And is, was in reply to this amazing message that the noble Van made his memorable address of seven hours length. This was before cell phones, when people had better attention spans. Seven hours in which he formally drew his indictment of Galagastia, Galagastia and Lucifer as standing in contempt of the sovereignty of the universe of Nebadon. And he shot off a quick emails to the most highs of Edentia, who he happened to know, for support. But the system circuits had been severed. Urancha was isolated. Every group of celestial life on the planet found itself suddenly and without warning, utterly cut off from outside counsel and advice. For his efforts, Van led forty of the one hundred clear of rebellion. And Urancha's ambitions were crushed. What does it matter if all things are earthly crash? The last paragraph of the paper of the universe mother spirit. In every dark hour, at every crossroad, in the forward struggle, the spirit of truth is always, will always speak, saying, this is the way. The Nodites descended from the rebellious group of Dalmatians and the Andites descended from the loyal Dalmatians. They were cousins, really. But animosities between these two groups continued for more than 100,000 years. Can you imagine that? I mean, look, I've got five brothers, so I can imagine 70, 80 years of animosity, no problem. But one, but 100,000 years. Trust and faith in the face of adversity. This is the key challenge to Machaventa's revelation. Let's call it the third epical challenge. To have faith in God and to trust that faith alone is enough. It does not matter what spectacular good fortune has come your way, nor what great hardships have befallen you. Neither is a sign of God's favor, favor or displeasure. This challenge is still confronting us today. Still, people hold on to the prosperity doctrine, the idea that your wealth is a sign of your good graces with God. One of my best friends in the world was raised by a tremendously loving dad. He worked hard, raised his children in the church, was a good father and a good husband and a good member of society. And then in his 50s, he suffered a series of strokes that reduced him to a shell of himself. Eventually he died after seven or eight years of growing incapacitation. And my friend, he didn't stop believing in God, he simply grew angry with God. Good things are supposed to happen to good people and his father's journey just flew in the face of that belief. The third epical challenge is here to address such Jobian issues. Jesus said to a God-knowing kingdom believer, what does it matter if all things earthly crash? The midwares tell us that temple securities are vulnerable, but spiritual sureties are impregnable. When the flood tides of human adversity, selfishness, cruelty, hate, malice and jealousy beat upon the mortal soul, you may rest on the assurance that there is one inner bastion, the citadel of the spirit, which is absolutely unassailable. Such spirit-born individuals are so re-motivated in life that they can calmly stand by while their fondest ambitions perish and their keenest hopes crash. The third epical challenge is about your relationship with God. It's about transformation of the self. And then we see it be built upon in the coming revelations. Jesus takes up Machaventa's teachings on faith and builds upon it. It's not just about your relationship with God, but your personal relationship with God. And once you have that personal relationship, you have to go one step further. Faith alone gets you into the gates, but to remain in the kingdom, you must act. You must serve one another. The right to enter the kingdom is conditioned on faith, personal belief. The cost of remaining in the progressive ascent of the kingdom is the pearl of great price in order to possess which a man sells all that he has. Jesus's revelation is, is a personal relationship with God that propels you into service. You serve your communities, you serve your families, you serve as you pass by. The fourth epical challenge is love and service. It is a group transformation and there's power in this. If you live, if your life is so transformed by the teachings of Jesus and you successfully raise your children in the same mindset, and maybe you can turn a handful of your friends over to your viewpoint. And then they raise their children and all those future generations can turn some of their friends around. Well, then if you have the patience to wait a few centuries, the teachings of Jesus can make their way across the globe. So how does the fifth epical revelation build upon the teachings of the third and the fourth? Faith and trust, love and service. So here's the thing, there is a plan. Usually this plan is well thought out over and adapted and shaped over hundreds of thousands of years by a planetary prince and a material son and daughter and magisterial sons and bestowed son and on and on and on. There is a plan, but you know, our plan has kind of become messed up. Our plans still exist though, but they're in the hands of these unseen friends who ability to directly guide us is limited. So now enter the Urancha book. We have not been given just what we need for today, but teachings that far exceed our earned status. We have been given glimpses of what is to come. We have been shown glimpses of light and life. And here's the thing, light and life isn't even the end of our social destiny. Light and, light and life is the seventh stage of our evolutionary development, but there are seven stages of light and life itself. Reaching light and life isn't the peak of our social destiny, it's merely our halfway point. It's the peak on the mountain that we are climbing beyond which lie untold lands of milk and honey. But we can't really conceive of, conceive of those right now. So we focus on the peak that's in front of us. We're climbing toward light and life. We have this vision of light and life before us, but not just of that era. By the end of the planetary prince era, we should have gender equality. By the end of the material sun era, we should have internationalism and the global language. The magisterial sun era is the age of flowering arts and music and higher learning. The bestowed sun era is characterized by a worldwide pursuit of moral culture and spiritual truth. We are given these glimpses of our future social achievements. So Machaventa charges to have faith and trust, personal transformation. Jesus charges to have love for our fellows and to use that love to serve one another, group transformation. And now the fifth epical revelation has shown us a vision for our social destiny that we could combine with the vision, with the charge of Jesus that he has given us. We can work to transform our current world into the world of our destiny. We can drag our future into our present. And this is a building upon the previous epical challenges. With Machaventa, the challenge was to put stock in trust, which leads to faith in the face of challenges. With Jesus, it's to put stock in love, which leads to service to those around us as we pass by. And the fifth epical challenge is to put stock in knowledge, which leads to wisdom in the face of global transformation. Wisdom to act upon the knowledge that we have been entrusted with. I was reading The Life You Can Save by Peter Singer and finding a pretty convincing argument that the $3 I spent on a cup of coffee could have been spent to save the life of a child dying from diarrhea. Once I had that kernel of knowledge, wisdom just kept poking at me. Even if all I was, all I could think to do was to count up the number of coffees I'm buying and then, you know, write a check. The Urancha book has entrusted us with the knowledge of the accomplishments of our society that we will eventually obtain. Wisdom says we should drag our future into our present. So how do we do that? So look, we know that by the end of the endemic age on an average world, we should have control of the natural world. And if you are working on that, by the way, then God bless you, keep up the good work. What are you doing here? I am not that person. I'm not able to influence our world toward one single global government. I'm not able to provide the 800 million people without access to clean water, their basic human needs. But what can I do? But what can I do? Personality and personality transformation is a key theme of the Urantia book. But we're never really given a satisfactory definition of what personality is. We're told that the personality of mortal man is neither body, mind nor spirit, neither is its soul. Human personality is the time-space image shadow cast by the divine creator personality. Personality is changeless in the presence of change. Personality is the one unsolved mystery of the universe. Personality is key, though, to one of the great mysteries of the fifth epical challenge. In his farewell discourse, Jesus taught, "You can know the truth and you can live the truth. You can experience the growth of truth in the soul and enjoy the liberty of its enlightenment in the mind. But you cannot imprison truth in formulas, codes, creeds or intellectual patterns of human conduct. When you undertake the human formulation of divine truth, it speedily dies. The postmortem salvage of imprisoned truth, even at best, can eventuate only in the realization of a peculiar form of intellectualized glorified wisdom. Static truth is dead truth and only dead truth can be held as a theory. Living truth is dynamic and can enjoy only an experiential existence in the human mind." This book that we all love so much is filled with knowledge, but static knowledge becomes dynamic wisdom when we pass it through our personalities and make it actual in the world. The Urantia book is filled with wonderful personalities that shine through the pages. It's Jesus and Machiaventa and John and Van and Andrew and Peter and Adam and Eve. We latch on to their stories because of the personalities involved, because we can relate to their stories and we can relate those stories back to our own lives. And then we can relate them to others. The truth shines through. But there are other parts of the book that are more distant, things we've never heard about or heard of before outside of the Urantia book. There are parts about unqualified absolutes and ancients of days and gravity messengers and paradise transcendentalers. These teachings are true revelation, perhaps destined to be only truly understood by future generations with more advanced techniques in the triangulation of spiritual truths. But we have within our community right now, those rare individuals who are able to absorb this relevatory knowledge and pass it through the prism of their personalities to share the wisdom with the rest of us. And this process is a key part of the revelation, the transformation of knowledge into wisdom. There are these things that exist, these mysterious processes that are utilized, that are ineffable, or at least they are to our current minds. But the revelation begins to give words to the ineffable. So too can we begin to give words to the spiritual truths that so many people throughout the world grasp, but do not know how to express. There is a peace of God that lives within each of us. Life after death is not a one-stop shop or a career of learning and evolution and growth and service. We can give words to all of this. And words are powerful. Words shape narratives. They change the cosmology of a society. We can all contribute in other ways. Some key wisdoms at the founding of the Urantia Brotherhood in 1955 include that the book belongs to the era immediately to follow the conclusion of the present ideological struggle. We can all contribute to the building and reinforcing of the structural unity of the Urantia community so that the Urantia teachings are preserved for these future generations. A wiser man than I once said, "Decisions are made by those who show up." And here, I'm paraphrasing a friend who himself was paraphrasing someone else. So at this point, I might just get to claim this quote for myself. I'm not really sure how that works, but God waits not for the perfect, but works with the willing. So we can all show up and we can all be willing to work. Words matter and how we shape those words matter. As another avenue for comparing the fifth and third epical revelations, we can ask, the third epical revelation was an emergency revelation, right? So is the fifth also an emergency? And we could look at this from within the book, right? So there is a standard course for epical revelations. Oh, look at that, we went ahead one. Oh, well. Uh, there is a standard course for epical revelations. The Machiaventa sojourn on earth was not part of that course. So therefore it was an emergency revelation. The Urantia book too is not part of the standard course for epical revelations on a world. So therefore the Urantia book is also an emergency revelation. Or we could look at it as, our unseen Melchizedek friends were asking for help and advice and the response was, in essence, do what you think is best, but as an isolated world, you are on your own. Whereas in the Urantia book, uh, it has been a collaboration of personalities from up and down the universe scale, being a collaboration of midwares and Melchizedeks, divine counselors, universe censors, one without name or number, and many, many more. This revelation is not an emergency revelation. This is a singular revelatory gift. Ram Dass once said, "Everywhere you look, you see what you are looking for. When you're looking for God, all you see is God. Everywhere you look, you see what you are looking for. If you're looking for a world in emergency need of divine intervention, then by God, you will find it. If you're looking for evidence of divine collaboration, you will find that as well." The same is true for our late night discussions of, is Urantia a religion? If you're examining our community and you're looking for evidence of a distinct religion, you will find it. If you're looking for reasons why we are not a religion, you'll find that as well. If you look at our Urantia community and you want to see conflict, you will see conflict. If you want to see harmony, you will see harmony. If you want to see God shining in the personalities of each and of every one of its individual participants, then you will see God. And if you want to see a challenge, a call to service that will transform your point of view and align your will beyond this material realm and prepare you for the journey of an ascension career, then by gum, you will find that call to service. All we have to do is look with the right set of eyes. What cosmology are you looking for? In our local study group recently, we read about Jesus going to John for baptism. The Urantia book explains that people being baptized were not doing so as a sign that they were ready to enter into faith, which is how we generally use baptism ceremonies today, but rather that they were submitting to baptism on behalf of their people, hoping that if enough people would submit themselves to God's will, then the trials of their nation would end. And it was in this spirit that Jesus submitted himself to baptism as the son of man, as the representative of his people, all humanity and all mortals. But Jesus, of course, has a second nature, the son of God. And as the son of God, Jesus goes to baptism as a representative of God's commitment to people. Abraham made a covenant with Melchizedek, that man will have faith and God will do the rest. Jesus goes to baptism as a symbol of this commitment. Whatever action we do is a sincere symbol of our faith. God will meet us there. That means going to the river for baptism. God will meet us there, just as Jesus did. That means to sit in daily meditation, God will meet us there as well. Or dancing in the aisles of a church, or serving in a charity, or praising God and nature. However, we choose to sincerely express our faith, God will meet us there. The catch here is that, of course, we don't all express our faith in the same way. What is a sincere expression for one person might have not, not have the same outcome for another. And here we come back to the lessons of Eratosthenes and the travelers from a swan. We don't all have to have the same expressions of faith. That doesn't mean we ought not express them. Of course we should. By doing so, we will attract others who are keyed into a similar expression and we can share God as a group. And we never know how our own unique expressions might affect others in a way that different expressions never have. As Rufus Jones said in a sermon in 1932, "Nobody knows how the kindling flame of life and power leaps from one life to another. What is the magic quality in a person which instantly awakens faith? You can listen to a hundred persons unmoved and unchanged. You hear a few quiet words from the man with a kindling torch and you suddenly discover what life means to you forevermore." You can share your personal expressions of faith and it might open the door for another person. And when we combine this knowledge with many different sincere sons and daughters of God, we can triangulate great truths that we couldn't have experienced on our own. Oh, did we miss that one? It was a very nice quote and he's a very nice looking man. Can I read it to you also? Rufus Jones said, this is a sermon from 1932. "Nobody knows how the kindling flame of life and power leaps from one life to another. What is the magic quality in a person which instantly awakens faith? You listen to a hundred persons unmoved and unchanged. You hear a few quiet words from a man with a kindling torch and you suddenly discover what life means to you forevermore." So we can share our sincere expressions of faith and it might open the door for another person. And when we combine the knowledge of many different sincere sons and daughters of God, we can triangulate greater truths than we could have experienced on our own. So that is what could happen if we drag our future into our present when we combine the challenges of the third through fifth epical revelations. A solitary messenger says that our adjusters are pleading with us to live our material lives in the light of our spiritual and future career. What we do know is that standing static is not an option. Each morning when we awaken, we must embrace whichever epical revelation or whichever epical challenge is facing us that day. Yesterday's wine skins must be replaced by a determination to face the fresh challenges of tomorrow. For, as a prophet of old recorded and the Urantia book repurposes for a new and dynamic epical generation, the old things are passing away. Behold, all things are becoming new. Thank you, everybody.